Good afternoon, once again to everyone, and thank you all for coming out to a special night. And I would like to call the meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present. And Assistant City Manager Wilson is also on the dais. As you all know, the city of Colleen is going through a trying time. And then in an order to honor Captain Marvin Taylor III, I spoke to Chief Kobinski today. And he has signed up for citizen comment. And he will not only pray for the incoming council members, but we also wanted to honor him. Chief Kobinski.
Bear with me. Let us acknowledge the universal source of goodness and peace, whatever name we may use to describe it, and ask for a blessing that encompasses all passive faith. Lord, thank you for this beautiful day today. The sun is out, shining brightly upon us, brightly upon our new incoming city council members to be sworn in. Let us thank our outgoing council members for their wisdom and their courage to lead. And I ask that you bestow that courage and wisdom to lead on our new incoming and returning council members and all of our current council members and the mayor. Lord, I ask that you give us strength over the next week so that we can take care of our brother, Captain Marvin Taylor, and make sure that he and his family are taken care of, not only in the coming weeks, but for the years to come. I thank you for the community that you bestowed upon us and the strength that community has shown. Our department, over the last couple of days, is encouraging. And I ask that you take that community's strength and share it with the city council and ask our community to support the city council in the way that they've supported us. I ask that you pray for Marvin and that you keep him next to you so that he can protect us. We ask this in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief Kobinski. Our hearts, thoughts, and prayers go out to you, Captain Taylor's family, and also to the firefighter family. The next person to speak for citizen comments is Lorraine Thomas.
Greetings, Madam Mayor and Council and everyone here. I just want to comment regarding Councilman Boyd and the recall. I don't agree with the recall of Councilman Boyd. It is a rare thing for a young person to take interest in their community and the city, which he has done. And so I would like to commend Councilman Boyd for his contribution to his district and the city of Colleen. He actually listened to the citizens and took action on their behalf. His compassion is far-reaching, even in an attempt to recognize a veteran that served 30 years, fought in four Vietnam War, received a Purple Heart, returned to his city after he served his country and protect our freedom, and was known as the running man, greeting people as he ran through the city. I would like to recommend to the council that they review and make adjustments to the recall process to prevent disgruntled citizens and formal council members from weaponizing it to tear down members of the council that they disagree with. And finally, I know bad news sell, but it will be refreshing to hear about the good things that all of you guys have done over the years for Colleen. I see the growth. I see the people coming out. I see downtown looking nice and people feeling safe. There is a sense of community that is building. But we always hear the bad news and the negative things, and it's targeted where we can't see what you're really doing in the city. And finally, to Councilman Boyd, I would like to say, as you move to another phase in your life, always remember, the crowd is not always right. There was a crowd that once shouted, "Crucify him, crucify him." And they accepted a thief instead. But you know what? They talked about Jesus too, and he turned out just fine. And I'd just like to thank everyone for what they have done and pray that God will continue to bless you as we live in this city and as it grow. And I just thank all of you for your service and what you have done. And I just want Councilman Boyd to know that I am very pleased and proud of him. God bless you.
Thank you. Now we will have ordinances. Madam Secretary.
OR 25-008, consider an ordinance canvassing the returns and declaring results of the May 3, 2025 special election regarding a bond election. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance canvassing the returns and declaring the results of a bond election and other matters in connection therewith."
Thank you. Canvassing authority will present the election results. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to start off with the bond. It's, the results are early votes in person, 774 for, 1,086 against. We had four early votes for, 11 against. And Election Day votes is 368 for, 719 against, which brings the total to 1,146 for and 1,816 against. A majority of the qualified voters of the city of Colleen, Texas, voting in such election have voted against Proposition B. So the council hereby finds and determines this proposition failed at the election. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve OR-25-008? You have to raise your hands. I don't count. Mayor Pro Tem.
I make a motion to approve OR 25-008.
Councilman Solomon. All in favor yet?
Raise your hand.
We don't have a button. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. All in favor, yes? All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary.
OR 25-009, consider an ordinance canvassing the returns and declaring results of the May 3, 2025 general and special elections. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance by the city council of the city of Colleen, Texas, canvassing returns and declaring the results of a general election held May 3, 2025 for the purpose of electing a district council member for District 1, 2, and 4, and a special election for a propositioning determining determining whether District 4 council member shall be recalled."
Councilmember Solomon. I mean, Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. For a council member District 1, Sherry Boy Pacella, 262 votes total received. Jessica Gonzalez, 350 votes total received. Berlin Valentine, 223 votes for District 2. Mr. Joseph Solomon, 671 for District 2. For District 4, Christie Will Banks, 260 votes received. Anthony Kendrick, 330 total votes received. Proposition A, recall for Mr. Michael Boyd, 317 for, 264 against. With that said, it said that Jessica Gonzalez was duly elected council member of District 1. Joseph Solomon was duly elected of Council District 2. Anthony Kendrick was duly elected Council District 4. All three elected officials are duly elected, subject to the taking of their oaths. That a majority of qualified voters in District 4 of the city of Colleen, Texas, voting in such election have voted for Proposition A, the council hereby finds and determines that this proposition passed at the election. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve OR-25-009? Councilmember Boyd.
I make a motion to approve.
Mayor Pro Tem Gonzalez.
I second that.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. You can click now. Motion carries seven to zero. We will now have special recognition and remarks. Counselor, I ask that we allow Councilmember Boyd to special recognitions, to give his remarks and to allow him time past the allotted 30 minutes. Is that okay, Counsel? Councilmember Boyd, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try to clear my throat here. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I've come to respect your undeniable fortitude in leading this city. I'm going to take a few moments to speak in my official capacity, my truth and my experience, before getting out of the way for our new distinguished District 4 council member, Mr. Anthony Kendrick. First and foremost, I want to give glory to God for blessing me with the opportunity to serve the citizens of Colleen.
Stand by. Can you turn up the volume, please? Thank you. I apologize for that interruption, but council members on the left of me cannot hear.
Okay. First and foremost, I want to give glory and honor to God for blessing me with the opportunity to serve as a local elected official for the past four years. I want to next thanks my, thank my wonderful family for your support and sacrifices. I made the city a top priority. I love and appreciate you all. To the city manager's office, our city departmental directors, our division leaders, your work and efforts remain stellar in my book. To each and every one of you, thank you for setting this city up for success in the future, to include its employees and our citizens. To the citizens of Colleen, District 4, I want to express my most sincere gratitude for your votes, your trust, and your patience over the past years. Representing you, supporting the businesses, and promoting our institutions has been a privilege as well as a pleasure. I recognize that I've always had a consistent base of support, and I want to thank those folks and let you know that I sincerely appreciate you. For those who don't know, the District 4 race in 2021 ended in a literal tie, followed by me beating a six-year incumbent 30 days later in a second election. Two years later, during the 2023 election, I became the only council member to run unopposed. And during the 2025 election, the most recent one, I filed to run for reelection and determined not to run, withdrew my name, making way for another candidate to serve in this great capacity. I can still remember sitting through the recount process and handling the ballots or observing the process to understand the weight of becoming a council member, understanding that I would be entrusted to move the city forward, to advocate effectively, and to remain professional as a council member. During the campaign, I made several promises, and I was then given the opportunity to get the job done, specifically making road improvements, adding new parks, and supporting economic development, as well as engaging the community within District 4. And with the support of my fellow council members, I was able to deliver on all those promises. On road infrastructure, I advocated to reprioritize both Bunny Trail and Watercrest Road to the top of the list for reconstruction and support the street maintenance fee as a funding mechanism. I advocated for Robinette Road, if you remember, was crumbling badly, to get milled and overlaid, in addition to Desert Willow Road, Reese Creek Road, Judson Avenue, and Yates Road, with Cody Pole Road prioritized for future maintenance. I advocated for a funding mechanism for much-needed future Mohawk Road extension, which will bring additional access to residents living off Alamo Seals Creek. This is very important and significant. On adding parks and trails, understanding the incredible park deficit across West Colleen, I spent an entire year conducting research and doing groundwork. And in 2023, February, I developed and presented the District 4 Parks, Open Trails, Trails and Open Space Initiative, which received unanimous support from the city council. While waiting to add parks, I supported the Colleen Parks and Open Space Master Plan, laying the framework for future parkland, the Parkland Development and Dedication Ordinance, ensuring parks are constructed in future developments, and the City Parks Facility Sponsorship Initiative, which creates additional funding for parks. And on last Tuesday, the city council effectively allocated $4.15 million of park funding to establish the new 38.5-acre Goodnight Ranch Community Park, the new 33-acre Bunny Trail Passive Recreation Park, the new 23-acre West Colleen Natural Area and Trail, and the new .9-acre Saddle Ridge Pocket Park. On economic development, with the Colleen Regional Airport located in my district, I staunchly supported staff-recommended improvements to the airport to include its renaming, covered parking, and LED lighting and security upgrades to foster economic growth. I approved funding for the construction of two new corporate hangars of the airport and, most recently, the 9,000-square-foot office building to be built for CSI Aviation, whom has determined to relocate his headquarters from New Mexico to the Colleen Regional Airport. The relocation will create 35 jobs and an average salary of $95,000. I advocated for funding for the new fixed-base operating facility currently under construction at Skylark Airport, this being a gateway building for aviators and executives who will encounter our city for the first time. And I served on the Colleen Economic Development Corporation, which secured the Dongjin Semi-Can Plant and acquired the 97-acre Wolf property for a future technology park. On community engagement, I hosted well-attended District 4 community forums on the campus of Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas, presenting a quarterly city hall report, state of District 4 council initiatives, and Q and A sessions. I advocated against a townhome development on behalf of the residents of Astonter West. I worked with Encore to resolve an ongoing electrical outage issue on behalf of the residents of Goodnight Ranch. And representing Colleen, I met one-on-one with Congressman Fluger in Washington, DC, advocating for federal funding for the future Westside Regional Park. And these are only accomplishments relating to my district, not mentioning the protracted support for citywide progress. Fortunately, my four years have been incredibly productive with very tangible results to see over time. But at the end of the day, I always understood that I was only one vote, and it took four to actually make things a reality. Notably, my record on motions made over the past 280 meetings carried a majority of 90% of the time. And truth is, none of the aforementioned improvements to West Colleen would be possible without the unselfish and considered support of my fellow council members here. But I learned with all the great work, progress and achievement, excuse me, there's a lot here, progress and achievements don't come without critics, busybodies, rabble-rousers, and outright haters. Concerning the local newspaper, loosely known as the Colleen Daily Herald, for many decades, the local newspaper has enjoyed a monopoly on covering this great city, which, in my opinion, explains why there's no motivation to change the emphasis of crime or the city hall drama narrative, which overshadows our community's great progress and potential. I heard it was once said that "we have more ink in the barrel than you have time on council," which I find very telling. Such a phrase could easily be interpreted as a threat to smear an elected official's character and reputation. And last time I checked, ink eventually runs out. On Sunday alone, I noticed four curated hit pieces on Councilman Boyd. Front page, editorial, Inside City Hall Diary, and in the election feature. Time and time again, I was subject to incredibly biased, unfair, and unbalanced reporting, not to mention the ridiculous and unsubstantiated to this day stories on my work in real estate. I never imagined being a young man and speaking with such vision, eloquence, and strength would make the leadership feel so uncomfortable in the newsroom. I guess I was making too many waves for the rotting ship to keep up with. And I do think it's probably time for a newer competitive vessel to dock here that can embrace undeniable growth of this city and celebrate our community's diversity. But let me remain productive in my speech by making the following charge, for the sake of this city council going forward: Use credible sources, not rabble-rousers. Report the news balanced and unbiased. The community needs to know what's going on, not the self-serving narratives to capture reactions and comments. Citizens are smart. Give them the facts and let them formulate their own opinion on the matter. Exercise reasonable expectations from the city and its elected officials. Sometimes they just need additional time to respond. Quit frivolous articles. That's tabloid-like behavior. At the end of the day, our community responds not only to the actions of its leaders, but also to the media's coverage of its leaders. These elected officials at this dais take our image of this city very seriously, and they don't deserve to have the sustained reporting on crime and city hall drama to be our narrative. In closing, to the council, it has been an absolute privilege working with you, each one of you, traveling with you and getting to know you guys as individuals. Each one of us have a unique skill set, varying perspectives, and a unique approach to the decision-making process. I said this in a previous budget meeting, and I'll be remiss if I don't communicate it a final time. We're going to have to invest in a professional rebranding initiative for the city to grow beyond the crime and city hall drama narrative. The detractors in local media currently have a stranglehold on this city's image and reputation. You are leading a population of 163,000 dynamic and diverse citizens who also deserve to live in a community they take pride in. But more specifically, there's four things I just want to point out to the council members here. There's four things very significant. You have in the seat, you being able to vote, being able to put something on the agenda, and to advocate effectively. Never take that for granted. That's a great power the citizens have entrusted. Mr. Kendrick, you will absolutely be the next person to lead this seat, and I trust you will do well, and I look forward to you leading me as a council member. And finally, before the votes are cast, well, to get to the point, I just want to thank everyone, for the last time, for the service here. I had some folks say, "Well, what are you going to do with everything that's going on?" I'm just fine. Councilman Boyd is going to be just fine. I'm a happy man. God is good. None of this phases me at all. I know God's got greater for me. Councilmembers, love you guys. Y'all are awesome. God bless you. All I got. I'm out.
Thank you. Counsel, Mayor Pro Tem Gonzalez, your remarks.
I just want to say a quick thank you to the citizens of Colleen, to District 1, and also to the council as a whole. Thank you also. It was a pleasure and honor to serve with you, Councilmember Boyd. Thank you for your support and advocacy in conjunction with me for District 1. Together, we were able to accomplish a lot and get a lot done. You were one of my biggest fans and biggest champions for getting the movement that we needed to have done in that area. Thank you to the citizens again. We have a lot of work to do. There's still more to be done. Have a great day. Thank you for being here.
Counselwoman McCaw.
Councilman Boyd, we started together, and we will continue to work in this community together, whether we're on the dais or off the dais. Always remember, whatever God has for you, can't nobody take it away.
Counselwoman McCaw, would you like to give remarks for the residents that I know you didn't have an opponent?
My favorite saying, "Work will win when wishing won't." We thank you for working with us. We thank you for being there for us. We thank you for supporting us. We thank you for what you've brought to the process of representing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd, it has been an honor to work with you. You have definitely been an advocate for District 4, and you have, you have strong beliefs and values. Your faith is within God. You are a family man. You're going to do well, no matter what you do in the future, because you're focus-driven. And I have been, it's been my honor to work with you. And I'm going to go to Councilmember Adams and see if he wants to say anything, then Segarra, and then Councilmember Solomon and Alvarez, before I present your award. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I replaced Councilmember Boyd on the Planning and Zoning Commission and then joined all of you up here on council. It has been a pleasure working with Councilmember Boyd. And I used to, it's weird for me calling somebody younger, but now I guess I'm old. The energy that you have presented, whether people agreed or disagreed, has been very beneficial to this council. And I've seen you do your research. Been with you in DC, in the congressman's office, or on Capitol Hill in general, and in other committees where we represented the city. Wish you best wishes and good luck, Godspeed in your future endeavors.
I'm going to go?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And I sat next to Councilmember Boyd during my term as a council member. And I can tell you, he works very hard for the city. He really cares for the city. I've been here, as everybody knows, the longest. And one of the reasons that I enjoy being here so much is because there is a lot. I love this city, first of all. You know, you've got to have it in your heart to say you really want to make a true difference if you're going to sit up here. And a lot of people are surprised. I know you guys out there are not, but I know a lot of people are surprised when we tell them we want to get paid $200 a month, $250, I think we ought to raise. And so we don't do it for the money. We do it for the love of the city. And I've always said, my number one thing, being a leader of the city, I know we fix roads, we do all kinds with crime and all that, but I think the number one thing that I've always tried to change is the perception. It's what people really think about. Because as Mr. Boyd said, there's a lot of negatism. It's easy to find that. It's hard to find all the good things. And the advantage that I have and a lot of us here, Mr. Boyd has, it doesn't start when we come up here and sit here. It starts way before that. We go out into your churches. We go out into your organizations. I go out into your homes. And I hear you guys. I hear what you guys are doing. And all that information is what feeds me. Just because we got three or four or five people that speak, and a lot of people wonder, "Why didn't you go with the citizens that spoke?" Well, we spoke to a lot of other citizens that are not here that we're representing. You know, as Mr. Boyd said, we serve on a lot of different organizations, and we hear that. So not always necessary that we're going to vote because they come up here, because we've been out there doing our work, doing what we get paid for. And so with that, Mr. Boyd, I know that you're going to definitely miss this, right? He's like, yeah, he's going to miss it. We're going to miss him. But, you know, like me, there's always other opportunities out there. I'm sure he's got a bright future ahead of him. He understands the city. He understands the citizens. And he really cares about the people that he works for. He's got a true, true heart. And with that, I say good luck, Mr. Boyd. It's been an honor and a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say to Councilman Boyd, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you for these couple of years that I've been on. I know I was a new kid on the block. When I came on, everybody was wondering what to make of me. At the same time, I was wondering what to make of you all. But I was, came in willing to work with this council and to make Colleen a better place to live in and to work for our citizens. And so, and you expressed that. You've shown your hard work and working for District 4. It's been a pleasure to work with you and to go with you and travel with you. I too was in that Congress in DC, congressman in DC. And it was just a good feel to work together. together up there in D.C. while we were in D.C. working together. And so, thank you for what you have done and what you have contributed, and I pray God's best for you as you move on.
Councilwoman Cobb, you spoke, but would you like to speak again, or did you?
No.
Okay, you said no? Okay. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think everybody has pretty much said everything that can be said about Mr. Boyd. It's been a pleasure serving alongside you. Thank you to the citizens for voting in all of the incumbents. You know, that shows a clear sign that the citizens, at least the ones who voted, agree with the direction that this council is moving the city. So thank you all for that. Thank you for taking the time to vote. And Mr. Boyd, you know, blessings and all that you're going to do and to you and to your family, and I won't be surprised if I see your name on a different ballot in the near future. So God bless you.
Thank you all for your comments. With that being said, the Assistant City Manager will read your plaque, and I will ask council, as I presented to Councilmember Boyd, please stand for his last farewell.
All right. Councilman Boyd, the City of Colleen proudly recognizes Michael Boyd for your dedicated service as District Four Councilmember, June 22, 2021 through May 13 of 2025. Your efforts to promote citizen engagement, fiscal responsibility, and economic development are admired, as are your efforts and passion will continue to make an impact on the future of the city. Your professionalism, thorough research, and innovative approach translated to effective decisions for the betterment of the community as a whole. Your willingness to take action showcased your commitment and focus during your term. Your dedication to the office of City Councilmember and the people you serve have left an indelible mark on the City of Colleen.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd, could you come down, please? A cupcake. Sir, on behalf of the City of Colleen, we are truly honored to serve with you. There will never be another Councilmember Michael Boyd. Follow God, and you will never fail. Thank you. Judge Krishna, could you come out? Council, Mayor Pro Tem, would you please go down? Councilwoman Cobb, and this Anthony Kendrick here. Sir, would you please come up front? Our oath of office and certificates of election.
First, the oath of office, and then the statement of officer. We'll start with the oath of office. If you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. One second. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, now repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Justin Kendrick.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
execute the duties
Execute the duties.
Of the office
Of the office.
Of City Councilmember
Of City Councilmember.
District
District Four.
Of the City of Colleen
Of the City of Colleen.
Of the State of Texas
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve
Preserve.
Protect
Protect.
And defend
And defend.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
And laws
And laws.
Of the United States
And of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God. Okay, one more time, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name
I, Anthony Kendrick.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not directly
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly
Or indirectly.
Paid
Paid.
Offered
Offered.
Promised to pay
Promised to pay.
Contributed
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute
Or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised
Or promised.
Any public office or employment
Any public officer employment.
For the giving
For the giving.
Or withholding
Or withholding.
Of a vote
Of a vote.
At the election
At the election.
At which I was elected
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward
Or as a reward.
To secure my appointment
To secure my appointment.
Or confirmation
Or confirmation.
Whichever case may be
Whichever case may be.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. You are both, I'm excuse me, you are all now official.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you.
Counsel, please stay down there.
Take pictures?
Once they finish with the pictures, we will do our standards of conduct. Counsel, we will be going down, everyone.
Yeah. Got it.
The other way?
Yes, there you go.
Good evening, City Council. The City Council's standards of conduct are as follows. Preamble. Holding a They don't need to raise their hand right now. No, you have no need to raise your hand. Holding a seat on the City Council is an office of trust and service to the citizens of Colleen. The mayor and councilmembers are expected to govern this city with dignity, integrity, and in a manner that upholds the highest ethical standards. To further these objectives, the following principles are presented to govern the conduct of the mayor and council in both their official and private actions. Principle one, honor. Be dedicated to the highest ideals of honor and integrity in all public and personal relationships in order to gain moral authority and merit, the respect and confidence of the citizens of Colleen. Principle two, equality. Be dedicated to serve the best interests of all of the people all the time, treating everyone equally and favoring none. Principle three, obedience. Be diligent to set an example of obedience to state law, city charter, and local ordinances that either mandate or restrain the acts of local officials. Principle four, conflicts of interest. Be careful not to use your elected position or the information you gain for personal benefit, to neither seek nor accept any gift that might influence your official decisions, and to avoid even the appearance of wrongdoing. Principle five, influence. Be aware of your considerable influence as you relate to the city manager and the staff, and refrain from improperly influencing these appointed officials or from thwarting the execution of any city ordinance, rules, or regulations. Principle six, confidentiality. Be faithful to safeguard confidential information, including all discussions in closed meetings which may harm the public's interest or council and staff working relations. Principle seven, interference. Be sensitive to avoid the appearance that an elected official can inappropriately personally intervene to provide special influence on an official decision or act of the city. Accordingly, do not personally represent any person, group, or entity before any city board, commission, committee, or council when doing so compromises the integrity of your office. Principle eight, civility. Be respectful and courteous to each other, staff, and the public at all times. Constructive disagreement and debate are expected, but the effectiveness of the council is dependent upon councilmembers who are able to peacefully disagree without personalizing issues or becoming uncivil. The mayor and councilmembers hereby covenant to hold themselves mutually accountable to this standard of conduct by all means available to them, always remembering that it is the people who hold the ultimate right, power, and means to hold accountable their elected officials for conduct while in office.
Okay. Once everyone's signed, we will go into our resolutions. Madam Secretary? Oh, God, I'm in the wrong seat. I'm sorry. Assistant City Manager, my focus tonight is so off because of just concern about Chief Kobinski.
Ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
RS 25077, consider a memorandum resolution electing a Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilwoman Cobb.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Elder Solomon, Councilman Solomon, for Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, Councilman Solomon. Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Mariano Adams.
Yourself, okay. Councilmember Adams. Anyone else? With that being said, all in favor of Councilmember Solomon being Mayor Pro Tem, raise your hand, please. One, two, three. Anybody else? Councilwoman Cobb? So it's just one, two? It's just two people? All in favor of Councilmember Adams, raise your hand. Councilmember Adams, Mayor Pro Tem. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilmembers
Madam Mayor, just one moment. What was the vote?
It was four, one, five to two.
Who were the dissenting votes?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Kendrick, did you vote in favor of Adams or Solomon? So it's not, I apologize. It's three to four. With Councilmember Solomon, Councilmember Cobb, and Councilmember Kendrick, they're voting for Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, ma'am.
There were two nominations, but I don't know, I know, just to clarify, was there a motion and a second on the, I know you were trying to figure out who had more votes, but we need a motion and a second and then an actual vote.
Okay. Okay, a motion for Mayor Pro, for Councilmember Cobb, I mean Adams, to be Mayor Pro Tem. Somebody need to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Councilmember Alvarez?
I'll second.
Okay. Well, Councilmember
Kendrick.
Kendrick, second. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. You can raise your hand. One, two, three, four, and five. Did you vote for Councilmember Adams? Okay. So it's five to, okay, Councilmember Kendrick, you didn't know that, did you? Okay, okay. So, Madam City Attorney, he was not trying to vote for Adams. He didn't know that? So do it still has to have to be five to two?
So I had the motion from Councilmember Sagara, and I thought the second was from Councilmember Kendrick. Is that not the case?
That is the case, but he voted in favor of Councilmember Adams when I asked them to vote, and he was not, he didn't know, he didn't want to vote for Councilmember Adams, but he voted. Do that, I think it's have to stand five to two.
But the motion is to approve Councilmember Adams right now?
Correct.
So the second was to second the motion to approve
Correct.
Councilmember Adams?
But he voted, and it was five to two.
Voted for Councilmember Adams
Correct.
Because he seconded the motion
Correct.
Voted for Councilmember Adams, and then we have the two dissenting, Solomon and Cobb?
Correct.
So I have the vote at five to two? Am I missing, I'm missing part of the question?
He didn't mean to vote for Councilmember Adams, but he can't go back and change that, correct?
We have a vote already on it, but so if we want to reconsider, if somebody wants a motion to reconsider, the vote can be rehilled?
So what happened was that you got it, okay, you okay with that? Okay. So can we get a motion to adjourn? Y'all need to switch, wait a minute, we need to switch seats with Adams and Gonzalez. Now can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adjourn our meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Y'all can just raise your hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Once again, thank everybody for coming out. Meeting adjourned. [applause]